All right, seven o'clock. Let's call this meeting to order. Start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which they are one nation, united, in the soul of liberty and justice for all.
All right, we're gonna call this meeting to order and get some administrative things out of the way. We'll start with the fact that the emergency exits are the one you came in at and the one over here. If there is an emergency, follow Ron Brand. He'll be the first one out. Don't worry about it. Just follow him and he'll know where to go. Uh, there is an emergency generator. We'll kick on after a few seconds after an outage. Uh, just stay calm and it will kick in. I don't think we'll need it, but you never know. Stranger things happen. Everyone should have signed in on the sign-in sheet. If you haven't, please do so. That allows our clerk to know who's in attendance. Okay, we're gonna follow the order in the agenda. Hopefully you got one. We're gonna follow that order and go through the process. Since many of you are here for the first time, I'll kinda give you a little sideline of how we handle each application. What we'll do is we'll have somebody come up and talk about the application. It will, after their talk about the application, we'll turn it over to staff. Staff will go through their conversa- their comments. Then we'll turn it over for public comment if it's a public hearing. The public comments, we're gonna, since we have so many here, we need to control the time, so keep it focused. I'll explain to you what type of information we're looking for on each project. Because remember, each project is different and at different stages for each project. Other than that, um, I think we're ready to get rolling. Did I miss anything? Oh, the most important thing. Turn your cell phones off, turn your watches off, all your other electronic devices. We don't need to be interrupted in the middle of these very important conversations. Okay, I think that's it for now. Uh, we'll start with the agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I forgot to educate you on the speakers. When you get ready to speak in the audience, I'm gonna turn this all-room mic on. That's the mics in the ceiling, okay? They're beautiful. They'll capture what you have to say. But they will also capture everything that anyone says. So if you have a little sidebar conversation with your friend next to you, it'll be recorded on YouTube for the rest of your life or longer. So, when I turn this on, I'm gonna remind you again, don't speak unless you're the person talking. Otherwise, it will be recorded forever, okay? All right, anything else I forgot? All right, first item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Everybody get a chance to review those. Any comments, questions, or changes? Have a motion to approve? Moved by Doug, second by, Tim, any other comments? All in favor, signal five, saying aye. Aye. One abstention, since he was not here. Okay, uh, the other thing for staff, although you guys are good for the board, please use your microphones, speak up so everybody can hear you and so it's recorded properly. Remind me to, um, to ask the folks on online about things too, since you can't attend online. It looks like we've got a a few people online, so we'll go for there. Okay, legal notices were published April 10th, 2024 in Daily Messenger. First item on the agenda is PB 0702-23 Fowler Family Trust. What do we have today?
Good evening, this is Jared Hurt with Evans Fox.
Okay, Jared.
How are you?
Very good, you?
Good. So, I received the comments from Mr. Brand. I did have a chance to speak with him on Monday. We are in the process of obtaining the soil survey that, uh, Mr. Brand, uh, said that he would like to see. Um, so with that being said, we're just asking that this be continued so that we can provide the board with the additional information that's been requested.
Okay, we have the resolution set up with an insert date in there. Do you have a date that you think that you'll be able to get the information to us? So we can determine when that might be a good next date for our, um...
That I, I do not have identified yet. I'd like to obviously turn it around as quick as possible. Um, I would think two weeks should be sufficient.
So our next meeting or the...
May 1st.
May 1st?
And if we don't have it by then, we'll just continue.
Okay. So we'll make that May 1st. Okay, now, again, as I've said many, many times, the key to this is getting the information to staff and then working with staff and making sure they're happy and comfortable with the data, okay?
The, the only, absolutely. Um, the only comment I would have on that is part of the proposed resolution is also having the town, um, retain its own independent geologist. I would assume that that person's going to wanna have to review the information we provide as well. And that the board's gonna wanna hear from them. Is that, is that a fair conclusion?
Well, it's an obvious conclusion, absolutely. So, uh, when I get to staff, we'll see what they think about the date, okay?
Fair enough.
Okay, you're good?
I, I am.
Okay, Ron?
Yeah, uh, the May 1st date would allow us to not have to re-advertise the public hearing because we're continuing to a specific date and time. Uh, if we have the information then, then we would have the independent, um, geologist do the review of that information. And get a time for when that information would be available. All of this has come about because of the information you received at your last planning board meeting,
Mm-hmm.
which, um, were from two different parties. Um, it was determined that we needed to have, uh, more detailed geologic information since the two general soil classifications that were identified have, I think it's a total of 10 or 11 different subcategories.
Right.
Um, and we need, just need to know where we're at. Which one are we, or two or three or whatever are we dealing with? So, um, I think, I, you know, I did talk with Jared, uh, on the phone and, and we're on board, so I think that we continue to May 1st and then at that point we'll have, you know, a better idea of how much longer it's going to take Mr. Baker to complete his, uh, report and submit the map. So you compare what you have before you and what you're getting.
Right, but it, we don't really expect that. We might get the information from him, but we certainly wouldn't get our independent to review it in that timeframe.
Who knows?
Okay, so right now we'll, we'll go with a May 1st and make sure I, we understand. Dan?
I have no additional comments.
Tim?
I have no comments.
Lance?
No, I don't have anything additional to add other than what, uh, Mr. Brand mentioned. I think the town will address that situation upon receipt of the additional information and then I would imagine that staff would work with Ron, uh, and the town on identifying who that third-party inspector reviewer would be and we'll go from there.
Okay, all right. For those of you here that are for the Fowler Family Trust project, okay, here's the, the Cliff Notes version of what you just heard, okay? We have determined in looking at SEACR that we needed additional information on soils and a couple other things. And a lot of it has to do with steep slopes and some other things, but there's some additional geological information that we deemed is required to allow us to go forward with determining the environmental impact on this project. With that, the applicant is working on getting us that information. We hope to have it and then possibly turn it over to an independent geological uh, expert to review that data, to look at it. So we will have all the information, well, the information we need to be able to make a, uh, environmental review and determination. Um, that's pretty much Cliff Notes version of it, so. So with that said, this is still a continued public hearing. Do we have anyone, any audience that would like to speak for or against Fowler Family Trust project, knowing that we're going to continue it till May 1st to get additional information? Anyone like to speak on the project? Anyone like to be here in the room, like to speak on the Fowler Family Trust project? Anybody online like to speak for the, on the Fowler project? Anyone online? That's the second one. Any of the board members have anything to discuss? I mean, we're gonna continue it. Okay, go ahead.
There's two dates that are required. One is for the, uh, requested supplemental information referenced above to the Town Development Office no later than, and then we said that the last one was public hearing to be continued until May 1st.
Okay, so we're gonna do that. So when do you guys need the data so that we can continue it to May 1st?
Um, to do that, we would need it a week before your meeting, so that would be April 24th.
Next week. It seems like it's just so, so tight, but we'll, so, we need it next week. Uh, the 24th, so, John, the 24th for the first one and the May 1st for the second. Okay, somebody's hand went up in the back. Hey, Jim, how you doing? Oh gee, I don't know about that, but I'll turn on your microphone. How's that? Mic's on, so remember everybody's conversation is being recorded. Go ahead, Jim.
Don't have any information by the...
Oh, perfect. I like to hear that. That's good. That allows us to get things rolling. Okay, cool. Okay, turning that mic on for everybody, so you can... Okay, there you go. Okay, we have resolution. Uh, applicant's read it. I don't think there's any issues with it. Okay, uh, we've got, uh, April 24th for the first date, uh, May 1st for the second one. Everyone had a chance to review it. Do I have a motion to waive the reading and approve this resolution as presented? Just a second, Ron?
You wanna check with Jared to make sure he's okay?
Jared, you're okay with the resolution, I take it?
I, I am okay with the resolution.
Perfect, okay. With that, do I have a motion to waive the reading and approve this resolution as presented? Motion by Tim, seconded by Adrian. Any other comment? Clerk, take a roll call vote, please.
Lucia?
Aye.
Delby?
Aye.
Aaron Sweeney?
Aye.
Adrian Bellis?
Aye.
Aye. All right, guys, thank you very much. That one is complete. Now we're on to, let's see where we're at here. We've got a few. Make sure everybody signed in. Don't let me, if anybody slipped in and didn't sign in, please do so. Next item up. PB 0201-24 Preliminary Two-Lot Subdivision, Pintail Crossing. Come on down. This is another public hearing.
Matt, I'm at Marathon Engineering.
Oh, Matt?
Hello, uh, we're back before the board again to discuss this. I know we've been here, uh, before as well as working with staff diligently on this subdivision in preparation for dedication of, uh, the roadway approved. Previously, uh, Pintail Crossing Phase 1 and 2, which now, uh, what's in the brown or orange, when we call pre-quit Phase 2, as an extension of Running Brook Road and a dedication of the roadway through. So, uh, in preparation for uh, accommodating the town with dedication of the road, which is, uh, being found to be as a day to both the town and to the developer. Um, we're proposing our preliminary subdivision and requesting preliminary approval tonight in, uh, preparation for obtaining variances caused by the dedication of the road previously had no road dedication through the middle of the project. But we only had front setbacks, for example, from the dead end of Running Brook Road and the dead end of what was called Quinshire Drive out for June 41st. And so, uh, the first phase of the project being Pintail Phase 1 is in the green. Those buildings are already built, parking's in, the infrastructure's in, the roadway is in. And Phase 2 of that in the orange, uh, has not been built. We got that approved, I think, in 2018 or 2019. Project was not funded, uh, through the HCR process, so we're now pivoting to, uh, a different developer who has a purchase agreement on and their building of 40 market-rate townhomes in lieu of the previously approved 48 apartments that were approved there. So, why are we here today to start? Well, from a subdivision standpoint, we have to split out the land that the road will be constructed on and dedicated to the town once it's completed. So, uh, that is driving the subdivision requirement. It's currently two lots and the existing, uh, parcel line generally follows the division between the green and the brown, uh, with a portion through the blue. So we're splitting out the blue and we're gonna remain with the two lots being the green and the brown with the area in blue for the roadway accepted out of that. We are on the agenda in a couple weeks for the zoning board. Uh, it's my understanding that I hope to walk out of here with a recommendation from this board to the zoning board as well in order to pursue those variances. Um, we have worked with staff diligently to try to minimize those variances wherever possible to the least necessary in order to accommodate it. Obviously, we can't move buildings that are already built on Section 1, but for Section 2, we're trying to match, uh, the, generally the setbacks to the Running Br- Running Brook Road neighborhood. We've also worked to add some parking, limiting driveways to the dedicated roads and setting them back in order to create extra spaces within the driveways, uh, which are all planning board site plan application items, which we will, of course, be back for soon if we're successful. So that's the overview of what we're looking to do, what we're asking the board for. I have read through the comments and draft resolutions. I believe that the only item that we wanted to discuss with the board on that, and I think there was a meeting possibly out on-site with the developer and, and some staff members relative to the request for the end of Running Brook Road and how that was going to be handled within the portion that's already dedicated.
I believe staff will address that.
Great. So other than that one, we've reviewed everything else and no issue.
Cool. Okay, turn it over to staff. Ron?
Yeah, as you know, you're the lead agency for this.
We are.
Coordinated review under SEACR. As the lead agency, you have the responsibility for Parts 2 and 3 of the full environmental assessment form, which has been prepared. You also have a resolution for determining significance. Um, you also have a draft resolution for, um, approval with conditions of the preliminary subdivision, the two lot. And you also have a memo to the zoning board of appeals, uh, giving them recommendations on the area variances, which were, uh, requested by them as part of the coordinated review. Um, I believe we're ready to go. I'm gonna leave the highway issue up to the highway expert down here to my left.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, he can, uh, clarify what needs to happen with that draft resolution.
Okay. Thank you. Dan?
Um, yeah, to just add to what Ron has stated, uh, the applicant has worked closely with staff, uh, has, uh, gone to our PRC meetings. Uh, the subdivision and preliminary site plan has been reviewed by staff and comments have been, uh, given to the applicant and are addressed in the draft resolutions that are in front of you tonight.
Okay.
So, and again, I was at that meeting on-site, but I'll let Tim cover what was discussed and...
Perfect. Okay, Tim?
Yeah, so we met out there the other day and discussed the, the condition that, um, the connection at Running Brook. So, uh, we came, you know, with the interest that the town really wants this road and, um, I'm gonna remove the, uh, condition of approval number seven of the 60 feet, approximately of 60 feet of, uh, of road there that was needed to make that connection that the town is gonna handle this part of it.
Okay.
So...
You're good to go with that, with number seven's written?
We're gonna remove that.
Okay. All right, um, Lance?
I don't have any additional comments.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Uh, this is on the, uh, PB 02-dash, or two, yeah, start again. PB 0201-24, this is Pintail Crossing. Anyone here like to speak for or against this project? Anyone here like to speak for or against the Pintail Crossing project? Anyone online like to speak for or against this project? One more time, anyone online like to speak for or against this project? Okay, we'll turn it over to the board. Uh, start with Tim. Doug? Adrian?
I have anything tonight on it?
Aaron?
I have nothing for the subdivision.
Well, I'll tell you that I always have something to say and, um, it's gonna be the same thing I say every single time. Parking, length of driveways, making sure people can park off on their own driveways because it's so critical. So anything you can do within, I know it's not the subdivision or the subdivision, but make sure you get as much driveway space as you can in there because we know no one's gonna use their garage. They're all gonna fill that with stuff and they're gonna park on the, that. Also, as much as you can do inside, so they can park along the roadways inside the project as opposed to parking on the roads, which are gonna be dedicated, which we will have a coronary about if they park on roads, uh, from what, 1 April or 1 October or 1 November to 1 April?
November 1st to April 1st.
Yeah, so we don't want to have them have their cars towed. That's, I always talk about that, you know that. I always try to make sure I throw that in there so nobody forgets. Okay, we have two resolutions here. Um, I assume you guys have read the, you said you read the resolution, so. First one is criteria for determining significance. So we have a resolution that declares this a, or we did the Part 1, 2, and 3 in the E, uh, FEAF. Um, and, uh, we have the Part 3 ready to, for me to sign. Um, has everyone had a chance to review everything? Do I have a motion to waive the reading and approve this resolution with conditions?
Moved.
Moved by Adrian, seconded by Doug. Okay. Clerk, take a roll call vote, please.
Lucia?
Aye.
Delby?
Aye.
Aaron Sweeney?
Aye.
Adrian Bellis?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next item up is the, now we're doing a preliminary subdivision plat approval with condition, which includes a requirement for them to get approval from the ZVA, so we're doing that. So, um, everyone have a chance to review it with conditions again?
You're all set now with that. One condition struck.
Longer is that seven.
Number seven is stricken. Stricken, struck, removed.
Removed.
Yeah, I gotta go back to school. Um, yeah, I know, I know. Uh, so, uh, everyone have a chance? Anybody have any comments? Do I have a motion to waive the reading and approve this resolution with conditions?
So moved.
Moved by Doug, seconded by Aaron. Any other comments? Clerk, take a roll call vote, please.
Lucia?
Aye.
Delby?
Aye.
Aaron Sweeney?
Aye.
Adrian Bellis?
Aye.
Aye, minus item seven. Okay, we're good to go there.
Remembering the planning board to...
Oh, yes. Now, for the board, this came out late today, so you probably even haven't had a chance to review this. So let me give you the highlights. Um, let me get to the highlight part. Regarding the proposed townhouse structures on Lot 1B, planning board understands right-of-way width for continuation of Pintail Crossing as a town-dedicated highway to connect to the intersection of Running Brook Road and Redfern Drive is wider and that associated with the private road, thus would, that will necessitate the area variances being requested by the applicant, uh, had and he has relocated the townhouse structures as far back from the future right-of-way as possible, thus still allowing the number of dwelling units deemed necessary by the applicant. And it was, uh, in this recommendation as a relief being sought to the district owner consistent to town plans, accepting dedication of the road and the right-of-way to avoid the town. So pretty standard stuff as it relates to this project. Anyone have a problem with me signing that letter to the zoning board? Okay, I'll sign it then, thank you. All right, with that, thank you very much. Okay, we're cooking. All right, next item up is PB 0404-24 Final Two-Lot Re-subdivision, Jason LaPlante. You guys wanna stand up? You wanna come up here? How do you wanna do it?
Stand if that's okay, if you can.
Okay, let me turn on the magic microphones, remember. Okay, it's on. Go ahead, give us kind of a, uh, an update of what's going on since you were here last.
Uh, nothing new. We have received the draft resolutions. We have no issues with the draft resolutions.
Perfect.
Your name, your name, please?
I'm sorry, my name's Nicole Vanderwall, here on behalf of the applicant, Jason LaPlante, as well as myself and my husband, Fran Vanderwall.
Perfect. Okay, that's the other thing I forgot to tell everybody. When you stand up and give your comments, you need to tell us who you are and where you live. Okay, never mind. Ron, it's up to you.
They have submitted revised preliminary drawings.
Yep.
We've got a condition of approval, uh, for final with, uh, before you. We're ready to go.
Perfect. Dan?
I agree with Ron's calling.
Excellent. Highway. Engineering.
I don't have anything on.
This is not a, not a public hearing, so, board, board have anything on this?
It is.
Okay, with that, do I, we have a resolution? Do I have a motion to waive the reading and approve the resolution as presented? The applicant said that they're okay with the condition.
Motion by Tim.
Motion by Tim, seconded by Adrian. Any other comments? Clerk, take a roll call vote, please.
Lucia?
Aye.
Delby?
Aye.
Aaron Sweeney?
Aye.
Adrian Bellis?
Aye.
Aye. There you go, you're good to go. Thanks, guys. I know it's been a little time, but I appreciate it. Okay, now, guess is what everybody's here for. We've got four items. We have two preliminary site plans, public hearings, and especially, two special use permit public hearings, but they're all on one project on two sides of the road. Um, this is on SkySolar. This is PB 0408-24, PB 0409-24, PB 0406-24, and PB 0407-24. So, what we have here tonight, we have preliminary site plan approval and we have special use permit approval. But, before we even get into all of that, I want you to understand that what we're dealing with at the beginning of all projects is the environmental record. We are going to be looking at the environmental record on this project. Not that we don't care about the actual site plan or the special use permit. Until we get the environmental record handled, that is, we don't think too much about that. So we're dealing with the environmental record. Now, so what I need from you as residents, I assume in the area, are facts, figures, and data as it relates to how this project would affect the environment. So that's really what we're here for tonight. Uh, we're going to begin and, um, with that, we have the applicant here to talk about it. Come on up and give us, they're gonna explain the project, um, what they're doing, how they're doing it, and we'll go through staff. And since it is a public hearing and there's a lot of people here, we'll go through and hear your comments about the project. I prefer them to be environmentally focused, but they don't have to be. It's a public hearing. And then we'll go from there. So, welcome, folks.
Who has their controls?
I do.
You do?
I'm gonna turn the room mic off for right now. Okay, go ahead.
So, thank you, uh, for bringing this up. First of all, I'd like to introduce myself. My name's Frank Burble.
Frank?
A little bit is, a little bit about SkySolar. Could you speak up a little bit, please? SkySolar, uh, SkySolar...
Actually, if you stand in front of our mic, it'll go.
It'll go over the speakers. SkySolar Inc. is the company that I work for. Uh, we are a subsidiary of SkySolar Holdings, which is a global company. Uh, we are based primarily... We are based primarily in Japan and in the US. We have smaller satellite offices in Toronto, in South America, in Uruguay, in Europe, and Spain. Me personally, I've been with Sky since 2010. I started in Solar in 2004, joined in 2010. And have worked on pretty well all the projects that have been either built in Canada and in the US. I have a couple of projects I want to just highlight, but next, next one. This is a landfill, a solar project on a landfill site, a closed landfill site in Vermont. The reason I pulled this one up is it has some unique features of environmental conditions. Not just the form, during construction, but app. So, I wanted to make sure that we pay a lot of attention to environmental constraints and environmental attributes, and this is probably one of the toughest sites to build on a landfill, or even on change the, any of the features of the landfill. Structures, it is important, this is a hand-built project, slightly different kind of requirements, it's similar to a rooftop, the structure is very important. This is a car parking area on the playgrounds, we want to make sure that anybody using that facility is safe, the cars are safe, the people are safe. So, safety is a big factor for us. And that's a project in Marshall, Massachusetts. Went online about two years ago. Currently, what we're working on, we have a base site in New York that currently being built. These aren't very exciting pictures, they're just showing the land preparation seal, we're gonna start pulling in, probably in the next month, on these sites. Located throughout the state, the state of New York, and I'm personally involved in meetings like this and other meetings to permit these types of projects. These are some of the projects, including this one, we're talking about the Seating, another one just down the road, and another one closer to Albany. Again, similar type of process, understanding the environmental impact, comments from the public going into construction. These projects here, we have another 10 or 11 that are behind it, will be likely in construction for our 2025 bill. And rooftops, and safety is a big concern on rooftops. Making sure that the building integrity stays together, the roof functions as it's supposed to, and it's safe. A large part of my time in 2010, 2014, I spent on rooftop projects. This is one. Have to have fun doing this work. This is a research project, which utilizes a lot of the components that we're using, they're talking about today, solar, battery, and its intended purpose is to charge an EV. But this specific feature is actually using the EV as a battery backup for the building. This is our actual satellite office in the Toronto area where we built that. We built this almost five years ago. The market's, it's our R&amp;D project, very excited to work on. Market is just catching up to where we proved this concept to work. And we may hear a lot about EV2 grid or EV2 home type of projects. Spend a lot of time documenting. This is a, this is a fun project, maybe in labor use, and this is a really grand force. And at this point, I'm going to Emily to talk specifics about this.
Hi, as Frank mentioned, I'm Emily Alukasik, I work at Bella Associates. We're providing civil engineering services, survey, environmental services, and permitting support on this project. So, I just put a couple slides together with some basic details. I also have, I think, also a little bit of full-size copies of the whole plant set, Emily wants to take a look at it. This is an overview of the project site. You can see there's two sides, more or less, east and west, and that's why there's four different things on the agenda today.
Right.
The project is designed as like one design site, but based on the regulations, that's the project. The east side has the road that's going to be part of the project, connecting the two ends of the 25. Yeah, so this road is gonna be the over the town when the project's complete. It's gonna also include running the existing utilities, the electric, the water lines through there to connect the infrastructure you guys have in the two ends of the road, as well as the sidewalk to connect the neighborhood that's next to this up to, up to that drive that's to the north. So, then that's all for this project to help, don't get back to the town for having us be able to put this in. So each side of the site is gonna be able to produce half of a megawatt, just one megawatt total of energy, and on the west side, there's also a battery storage facility that could grow up to five megawatts. West side, we have gone through all of our stormwater design, and we are maintaining, we're not increasing any flows or anything offsite as per DC regulations. Our stormwater treatment will be through two small bio-retinching facilities, address filter strips, other, it's a used with those security plans, and that's pretty much the basis. So if anybody, anybody, builder, I don't know if there was some questions.
I'm sorry. Okay. What we're gonna do now, we've got the general overview, now we're gonna turn it to staff, we'll talk to staff, and then we'll be a public here. So, Ron?
Okay, thank you. The planning board has classified this action and has started a coordinated review with a number of involved agencies. They include the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, the Army Corps of Engineers, the New York State Department of Health, the town highway superintendent, the town water and sewer superintendent, and the town engineer and town construct, or code of enforcement officer, because of the MS4 requirements. That process was initiated on April 4th. It expires on May 8th. And the next meeting of the planning board, where the public hearing will be continued to, is May 15th. At that meeting, the planning board has already declared its intent to be designated the lead agency.
Right.
As the lead agency, they have to prepare the parts 2 and 3 of the full environmental assessment form. They have to review the criteria in the state secret regulations and make their findings. And then they have to make a determination of significance. As Ed said at the beginning of the meeting tonight, the purpose of this meeting is to hear your concerns about the project, but most importantly, to hear any concerns you have about environmental concerns associated with the project. So with that, I'll turn it back to Ed.
Yeah, I mean, again, what Ron was talking about, all those fancy words, was environmental record. It's part of the New York State's requirement, and we have to do it, so. Let me turn it to Dan, we'll go through staff real quick, and then we'll begin the public hearing.
All right, so, staff has spent a lot of time looking this over.
Yep.
It's still under review by staff, as Ron just mentioned. From the MS4 side of it, the site has been very challenging.
MS4 is storming.
Yeah, sorry, for the stormwater. It's been challenging, we've worked with the applicant, we believe we meet those requirements now, but with engineering, we're still under review of that, so. From an environmental point of view. We have also dived into the site plans for staff review, and we have provided some comments back to the applicant, and I believe they are reviewing them and addressing them, and they have already made a couple presentations to our project review committee. So they have been working closely with staff.
Cool. Dan, talk to us about the road, how long that's been planned? Twenty, thirty years?
Yeah. So, Commercial Drive has always been to the north and to the south, so this is the connection that's by getting between the two now. So now we have a developer coming in that's actually gonna put the road in.
Right.
Rather than using taxpayer money to do it.
Yeah.
It's done by the developer. We did make some tweaks to the road. You know, there's gonna be the sidewalks, like she said, there'll also be streetlights at the crossings. It makes the water connection. You know, so that was always part of Commercial Drive plan.
And part of the comprehensive.
And part of the comprehensive.
Right. Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
Lance?
Yeah, just to add a little bit more, there is also a plan that's adopted by the town called the MTOD, Major Thoroughfare Orla District.
Right.
And that also identifies a road connection in that location. So therefore, any project, so any project that came before the town in this location would have been requested and required
Why?
to add this road connection in, which makes this project fairly unique, because most solars aren't developing town roads and sidewalks as part of it, which leads to my next point. There's fairly large substantial drainage plan that's being proposed as part of this application, which obviously we're reviewing in conjunction with, in requirements associated with the DEC, and then the town's MS4 requirements, as you heard earlier. The reason why that's unique is just, most of these don't have that substantial runoff condition, but due to the impervious surface being added, the road and the sidewalk, it has a larger runoff value, it has to be treated. As received, it does intend to meet the criteria to satisfy DEC and the town's requirements. Obviously, we have not yet completed a review of that, and we will provide comments to that upon completion of it. As any solar project within the town, it's obligated to meet the town's local law establishing solar requirements, so we're reviewing that with the latest version of that. As part of that, it has an O&amp;N plan, operation and maintenance plan, that governs the site after construction, if approved. And so, that tells us in the town how it's going to operate day-to-day, during what periods of time would be, we would expect people to visit the site, how will the site be maintained? For example, the grass inside the fence area, maintenance expectations of the facility itself, that governs that, and that tells us what that looks like. So we're reviewing that to make sure that's in conformance with the town's standards and requirements. And then, there's also a decommissioning plan, that decommissioning plan is required of any solar project, or cell tower, or clean energy type program. And what it is, is if the structure ever became abandoned, or if it fell through and needed to be removed, there's a plan in place that governs how that process takes place. What are the steps to removing it, what's the cost for removing it, and there's an estimate that supports that, that ultimately follows this project for the life of the project, again, if approved. That way, there's some protection and assurances against that, so.
And just a couple of general comments before we get into it. The road will all be curved, so that the flow, or any water flow on the road will go to catch basins and go into the system, so there won't be any runoff onto the side land from the actual roadway itself. So, that's it. The other thing is, is just so you, everyone here knows, and most of you may not know this, we completed a, well, still being built, or is it totally, no, it's totally operational now. We built a large one out on Yellow Mills, and we went through a year and a half to almost two years' worth of discussions on the environmental record and other things. Again, they were a lot different than this project here. Quite a bit, but, we went through all the issues of decommissioning plans and operational plans and all those kind of things, so, we're very familiar with the process required to do in a solar project. The other thing I would add is, in the process of looking at things, I found a couple documents that were in another project of ours, another project I saw, a Viewshed, as well as the glare analysis, and the I asked the applicants to provide that, and they have provided both of those to us. So, in our records at the building department, we have information on glare analysis and Viewshed, so you can kind of see that, too. So. Okay, here's where we're gonna do this, I'm gonna turn on the mic to the room, so watch your sidebar conversations. And what we'll do is, we're gonna start in this corner over here, and if you want to speak, raise your hand, I will point you out. Your conversation is with me, I will then determine if there's anybody that's gonna answer the question, or whether we'll take it, just put it on the record and move forward. So, the discussion with you is with me, and we will start the public hearing. Is there anyone over here? Stand up, give us your name, and tell us your address, please.
Les Raymond, 6010 Redfield Drive.
Okay.
We're very concerned about the woods that backs up to the back of our left.
Okay.
And we're about 180 yards down the road. And is there gonna be any woods taken out of there?
I believe the answer to that is very little of any, correct?
Let's get to Turner.
Yeah, go ahead.
We have a, we have a plan, we have a procedure that shows that, so some trees will be removed, but away from the residence, and they'll be
Very few trees of any, and if you look at the Viewshed documents they gave us, you could see that you won't be able to see through that.
The majority of the clearing, but I don't know how familiar you guys are all with that site, there is the established woods, and then there's more sort of like scrubby sort of marsh area.
I've been in the middle?
Yes, that's where the majority of the thing begins, that's gonna take place.
Yeah, so the road's gonna be?
Yeah, the road runs through that section as well.
But very little of any of the trees that back to the houses will be removed, if any. Okay?
Yes. They had one up there on the screen, you know, that appears. Do you have it then? Or it looked like there was a picture of it there.
Yeah, you can see, you can see there how much of that's still gonna remain.
Street line there, it's hard to see just with this.
Yeah, that's just a hair under, under the tree.
Where is the Redfield Drive or that?
Went back over there, that red right there is Redfield Drive.
The gray area?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's the gray one.
These are the homes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so these are the homes. Our property line starts right at the back of the home, so then there's a, as Emily said, about 100 people, so they'll be standing up.
Which way is north?
Directly up.
Top. So the Which side of the trees is the road?
Ah, don't discover things, please. Yeah, that's north, that Redfield Drive is the gray one, the dark is the connection to commercial.
That's opposite, it's inside out.
No.
When you look north, the wood is on the west side.
Yes.
Yes.
That's the west side of the housing.
The red, the red rectangles at the top is the storage unit facility, so the, there's the western woods, that's right there, so the road.
Okay.
Thank you.
And this corner is there. Name, address?
Lorraine McConnell, 6012 Redfield Drive.
Okay.
I don't know much about solar, I mean, as far as I've seen solar equipment out and things like that, but when you talk about transformers or things, is there noise? Is there like a generator, some people have generators and they spark up, you know, for five minutes a day?
The expert tell you, I mean, I know what my answer is, but I'll let the expert say.
So, it's not a, it's not a, there is a transformer on site, it is not a generator, so you cannot hear an engine type noise, you would hear a hum. But it would be similar to any transformer that's already in servicing commercial properties, so it's from the residence, I don't believe you'd hear any, any, you know.
Way too far away.
It's a, it's a hum, it's a, it's a humming sound, it's not an engine, there's no, there's no one of the beauties of solar.
Do they run 24/7, or do they come on at midnight?
When it comes out?
Or when, yeah, when?
When the sun's out.
When the sun's out? Okay.
Can't pick up solar in the nighttime.
Right, okay, so that's when you would hear the humming.
I, you wouldn't hear it unless you're pre-housed. The, I, those questions come up at a lot of my meetings lately, so I did a deep dive and stepped out, tested what decibels mean. Okay. And the sound associated with the transformers, it, wait, and this is if you're like basically next to it, is roughly the same as a light rainstorm or a refrigerator sound, that's the
Oh, okay, okay.
So if you're walking down the street
Right.
on the sidewalk, you might hear it a little, maybe on a good day when the wind's blowing the right way, but you're not
The same type of equipment that you would see on residential The same type of equipment that you would see on residential streets, the type of equipment that's on poles are there, it's, it's not, it isn't.
You don't hear those.
Substation type equipment.
Okay.
I think you're gonna hear the through waves.
Yeah, you can hear the through wave.
You're letting hear the through wave of the line.
Right. Well, I was just asking because it has, you know, it's operated by something, so I just, you know, was wondering about.
Anne, or I'm sorry, Lance.
It's okay, uh, so as part of the process, one of the items that would be requested would be like a noise study, which is typical of any application such as this. And that will have very similar data to what you're hearing, so they'll, they'll be able to provide some documentation that justifies what you're hearing today. So that'll be part of the review process.
Okay, the only other question I had was you mentioned something about water, you know, and drainage or something, um. Uh, because we do have water in our area over there.
Correct.
So, and some people have had issues with water.
This will not create any additional water issues and in fact, it probably will help with any additional, any existing water issue.
Because, uh.
Because of the way it's gonna be engineered.
Okay, so you build it, I mean, do you make it where the water is, do you make it deeper so that it doesn't, you know?
We'll leave that to my engineer over here and we'll have that discussion when we get to the site plan, there's no doubt.
Okay.
Do I give a quick overview or don't I get too bogged down into water management?
So the, the engineering firm has designed a plan to put the, the water, obviously in its lowest spot where, where natural flow is going to bring. On their site. Um, as part of that, they're not allowed to discharge directly offsite, so that anything that they're constructing has to be retained on their site. And then collected, treated before it runs off their site. And that has to be done in a manner that doesn't increase runoff from their site.
Okay.
As, it, it can't be greater or substantially changing from what it currently exists today.
Right.
So all the improvements that are there have a runoff, but it has to be collected on their site, treated on their site before it ultimately discharges from their site.
Okay.
And there's rules and regulations that we have to design to ultimately they have to need, and so that's what we're reviewing them against.
Right.
So the end result should be same or better water.
Okay.
Okay?
All right, that's all I.
Thank you, okay. Okay, go ahead, I'm here for him. Ron Wyler, six thousand Redfield Drive. Okay, so that fence you're gonna put in around, tell me about the fence. Made of what, how high? Pretty early to discuss, but we can go ahead and let you guys do that, again, we're talking about the environmental record here, but we'll go ahead and do the, uh. For sure, quick overview on the fence, uh, Emily?
It is a seven foot tall chain link fence. And it's, uh, just for security, for safety, to keep people away from the families. Um, so that's what we're proposing.
It's a security fence, basically, it's not, because there are so many trees there to block it. It's not for aesthetic reasons, it's, it's for security reasons for their purpose, okay? Uh, we got one back in the corner, he's been dying to say something here.
Hi, Richard Finn, sixty twenty Redfield Drive.
Okay, you got, did you get that, John?
There's a name, please?
Richard Finn, si- sixty twenty.
Okay. Um, go, document a name, remember, okay?
All right, going back to the trees and remove the trees, um, we actually live in the third building down.
Hey.
From the, uh, coming from ninety-six.
Hey.
Okay, looks like the road is very close to our building.
Hey.
How far is that away and will those trees be removed?
Yeah, and we're talking about, uh, or then we're talking about site plan issues, but. We'll go ahead, go ahead Emily, give them a quick overview, I'm not gonna get too much in the weeds on this.
So, um, part of the, the back and forth we've been doing with the town to get everything situated, it, this is sort of set up like a flag lot. So there's a very narrow space there here to get down to commercial drives, this has to go right here to get up here and go through the site. So the trees where the roads are will be removed, but we are going to, and after our last discussion, we're gonna actually look and see if we keep more than we're already planning in. That, on that side of the site, um, but where the road is going through, we have to clear it just to build the road.
Yeah, that's the only spot they have on their property to build the road.
Unless you go into the other land.
Can't go into the other land, they don't own it.
Um. All right, and then, um, how far away would that be from, from our backyard, because we have.
Well, it would be no closer than your back property line, I mean, it's gonna be, it's gonna be on their property. They're gonna have all the proper distances and easements and all the other things, so they can put water sewer or whatever down through there. But it's gonna be on their property, not on yours.
Understand. But is there a buffer between my?
Probably not, there won't be any buffer at all through there, I doubt.
So my house is gonna have a road in the front of it and in the back of it?
Correct. Same way, again, this, remember, this road has been planned for twenty, thirty years. The developer certainly knew about it and certainly any of you that wanted to look could have seen this exact situation happening. Because that road's been planned, I've been doing this for almost thirty years and it's been planned for as long as I can remember.
And I know this is not part of the envi- environmental thing, but, um, why is this road necessary now with the solar farm going in on that property? I understand that it was part of the master plan.
Commercial drive has been planned that way for.
I understand that, when you.
Ever.
I understand that, but now that you know what's there, why is this road now necessary? It's always been part of the master plan.
It's part of the master plan to get traffic through there and get it over to the other side over there, um, uh, well. I'm not gonna debate that as part of the comprehensive plan, it's been discussed numerous times, um, for the requirement to have.
So sir, when does that come up in the process?
When is what, it's part of the site plan?
To argue the road.
Well, you can argue the road anytime, but if the road's gonna be part of the discussion on the site plan, when we get to the site plan.
Okay, I understand this is the environmental piece.
It's environmental piece.
Okay.
The subdivision happens next, well, the preliminary site plan is open, so once we're done with the environmental record, we'll begin to discuss the site plan.
And is this the last discussion on the road?
No, no, it's never the last discussion of anything until we close the public hearing.
During the process.
I understand, till we close the public hearing, there's never a last discussion on anything, you can talk about the road anytime you want. Just understand that the road is in there as part of the comprehensive plan, it's been approved by the town board. And as well as the M T O D, male, uh, major thorough, thoroughfare overlay district, which again, been approved by the town board. The town board probably is more of a group to discuss the road with than the planning board, because we know that that's what. The town board and the residents want, uh, is to put that in there. Um, and we just try to make the project as good as we can, given what we have, and there's almost no property there to put that road on. Um, other than what they have there, so. Okay? All right, let's start, I'll go over here and then we'll get back to you over here, yes ma'am.
Marie DePore, sixty twenty-eight, I'm lot seventy, I'm the house closest.
Okay.
To the pond, okay? So, my backyard is forty-six feet, so the road's gonna be like, right there.
Okay.
My environmental questions, three, and thank you for covering the drain off, that was one. Number one, our houses, built by New York standards, are airtight, we've got one intake. Trucks going across that road are going to be emitting volatile organic compounds and particulates. How am I gonna know that that's not coming into my house?
The good points that we're gonna have to take a look at is part of something, oh, Anne can take it, answer right there.
Yeah, all those houses in that subdivision are all built with either E R Vs or H R Vs, which have filters in it, which would clean those particulates as they come in. Before they are sucked into your house.
The filters up?
No.
Or down by our heater, down, down to unit though, the filter I change out.
No, there, you should have a box unit in the basement. That has a filter in it that actually takes in outdoor air and.
That's the filter I changed.
Not the one on your furnace, I'm talking, there's a.
Some will ask, okay. All right, but, but I'm, I would also want to know that the air I'm breathing is clean if I ever should choose to open my window or go in my backyard. Only own forty-six feet of it, but I do own forty-six feet, okay? Here's another environmental question. When D C current is converted to A C current, a pitch results. It is not just a noise like refrigerator, it is a pitch. Some people, and I unfortunately am one of them, have unusual hearing. I would like to know where I can go to hear, because whoever is doing the environmental study. Ninety-nine point nine 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 percent of the chances, their hearing is not as good as mine. Okay, so I'm just saying, if you say it's that quiet, tell me where I can go, okay?
Anne, can we get her to go out to the, our solar project that we just built, Sarah? If you work with staff, they can get you to go out to the project we just built and I, and I assume there are similar transformers, I mean transformers are transformers.
It's, they didn't have a substation as part of that project, right?
No.
Then it would be similar equipment, can you also add just one thing, you said you're down at the south end, right?
Yeah, the. I'm right by the pond.
Okay, no, that would make any sounds is all the way at the top, it's all up there.
Understood.
So it's very far away from your house.
Understood.
Okay.
I can hear like a dog, okay.
Anything else, ma'am?
I have three, one more, the environmental assessment report, as in, someone who has, um, quite a bit of a stake in this, do I get to see it?
Everything we do.
Okay, how do I get my hands on it?
Talk to staff, so you'll be able to see it, staff will have it, we'll publish, we publish the part three when we get ready, we publish all the parts. When we do that, we publish it all, it's all on the website, it's all available, um, we're an open book.
Okay, sorry, and the trucks, the road is for trucks, right?
No, it's for anybody that wants to drive.
But the intent is for trucks.
Basically, I mean, it's in an industrial area.
So the sound is going to cover the rumbling ground?
Of what?
Trucks.
Are they environment, I mean.
You, you provide us with information that identifies what the level of those decibels are for the rumbling trucks and we'll look at it.
Uh, okay, this is the first time I've seen the map of where my house is in the road, so how am I supposed to provide that to you right now?
Well, let's not get in an argument, we're gonna do environmental review, we'll do what we can, I mean, honestly. There are many, many, many locations in this town that are near someplace where a truck would drive. So, uh, it is what it is, but we'll go from there, Dan?
Just one quick correction of the record, that solar project is not a town project, it is another application.
Oh, true, that is true, I say it's ours, we spent two years working on it, it feels like it's mine, but. But, uh, we will work with the people that own it to try to do that. Okay, this guy over here has been very patient, please, sir.
Yeah, my name is John Brady, uh, I'm, I'm the sixty-eighteenth Redfield Drive.
Okay.
I'm an retired land surveyor and I've had several meetings with D M.
Okay.
Uh, regarding the road, I gave as much information as I could about the road.
Okay.
And I'll just talk about the environmental conditions.
About the lot?
The environmental.
Yeah.
Record right now. And that deals with noise pollution. The road coming in from the, uh, soonest the south, coming there from ninety-six. Um, with an S turn in the road. The traffic which is going from the north to the south, uh, goes into an, um, um, slope on the road, a designed slope according to the plan. Over about five percent.
Okay.
Right, this, that's uphill. So you're going to get tractor trailers and that is the primary amount of traffic, it's gonna be tractor trailers. Uh, you're gonna get tractor trailers shifting, making a lot of noise, uh, going up that road and that road is exactly that far from my property.
Okay.
It comes right to the property line according to your point. Uh, there's no buffer, uh, there's no provision for controlling the noise. And with the amount of truck traffic that goes there, it's gonna be day and night, I'm assuming. Uh, that's something that the environmental record should show, it should be dealt with.
Okay, appreciate the feedback. We're taking it under consideration over here.
John Costanza, I live at six oh, six zero two two, and that's the, uh, right next, that's the one in the middle.
Mm-hmm.
One, I moved here from Perrington and I know Farmington has a long established history of, of creating green space and, and wanting green space. And when I bought that property, um, I knew the town owned it, but I always thought that they would keep it green.
The town owned it, now doesn't.
Oh, I thought the town.
Nope.
Okay.
Well, land over. He bought it from somebody, they bought it, or he either bought it or, or buying it from another landlord.
Well, as I'm looking at that road, because I'm right on that S curve, I mean, I could shake hands with the person driving down the street pretty much. Um, I, I don't want that in my backyard, I mean, I, I'd rather have the green space that's there, I mean, it's beautiful in the fall, it's nice in the summertime. If you could swing that road around and keep that space there.
Swing it where?
The other way.
It goes all that property.
Well, you, there's something called eminent domain.
That's a town board issue, not a planning board issue.
But.
Nothing we can do about that.
But it's, it's gotta be brought up, because.
Town board, they gotta bring it up to town board, it can't bring it up to us, because we can't do that, and we have nothing to do with eminent domain.
Well. Taking the, the suggestions here about the noise pollution, about the air pollution, I mean, I'm right there, I'm getting it all. And those fans that, that they were talking about, they put on Redfield Drive above your furnace, they'll do anything.
Okay.
Do nothing, so I'm gonna get all the particulates, I'm gonna get the rumbling of the trucks. I mean, thi- this piece of property is gonna be worthless for any of the neighbors who bought in that area.
Appreciate the feedback. Who was it? Over in the back over there, yeah, your man.
Robin Finn, sixty twenty Redfield Drive.
Hey.
I'm where I can roll out of bed on the road, which is a problem that I have too, but being envi- environmental. Last, um, summer, there were three fires in battery storage facilities in New York State, Jackson County, Orange County, Suffolk County. People had to, um, remain in their homes or go somewhere until they could figure out if the air was gonna be okay, they still don't know about water. So that's a safety, environmental concern along with the road that I.
Well, certainly water wouldn't be affected since we get our water from Canada, in fact, so that wouldn't be an issue unless they have one down there. Um, and certainly it's tested, um. You know, if the rest of it, we'll take and put it on record and, uh, we'll consider it during the environmental record. Okay, somebody over here, right up here, ma'am.
Susan Hillard, and I'm at sixty eleven, and my concern is. All of you, I, I, I guess I don't understand this process, you're telling us we can't do anything about the road. Because it was approved twenty or thirty years ago, so what's the point in having a public hearing?
You take your feedback and try to make this the best project we can, given what we have. What we do every day is what we're required to do, we have to stay within the property that this, that this person's going to have. We can't turn around and do eminent domain on something, that's not our role, that's a town board issue if they want to do stuff like that. Um, we're looking at the environmental record, and if the environmental record for some reason comes out. As a negative, then we'll have to deal with and come up with mitigations that will address any and all of the issues as it relates to the environmental record. This is a very preliminary discussion, this is the first time we're having this discussion. We'll take all the feedback we have, we hope to see you at many of these meetings as we go on. Because these will go on for a while as we deal with the environmental record, uh, based on this project. I mean, if you're worried about us, we've been doing this a long time, we do it in a very professional manner. This town has a reputation to uphold, that's been upheld by the courts numerous times. That we do things the right way and we'll continue to do them the right way as it relates to the requirements of New York State and the requirements of what this town does.
But what is our recourse? I mean, you're saying you're gonna take it into consideration that we all have questions, problems, issues with this road. But, and the other hand, you came out and said, well, it's been planned for twenty or thirty years, that's it.
We're trying to, we didn't say that's it, we're trying to help you understand the history behind all of the different pieces here. If we decide that we shouldn't put the road in because it's environmentally doesn't fit, then we will address that when that time comes. When it gets to the point where we approve the environmental record, if you don't think that the environmental record is correct. Your recourse is to take the town to court, I mean.
Violent injunction.
Well, no, there's a process to. Well, no, there's a process to go through. I'm not gonna go through all the detail, but you know, I, you know, I'm trying to help you understand the overall process. Probably too, more than I should actually. Somebody's gonna shoot me in the foot if I say too much more, so I'll stop there. I got somebody over here in the red, uh, red shirt. Yeah, go ahead, sir.
Uh, Bill Cell, fifty-nine seventy-six, Redfield Drive. I'm, uh, concerned about two things in the en- environmental impact. We've had a neighborhood discussion with our building inspector about the retention pond at the top of the hill. That has on torrential downboards, zero runoff. And we're told that the water is supposed to come from the ninety-six area. Route ninety-six into that and then down to the lower retention pond at the bottom.
That's an existing environmental property.
Property.
And you let staff know about that and you guys have looked at it?
We're currently, on the lower one, we had to hire, or we have to hire a re-engineering firm to reevaluate whether the land developer did it properly.
Okay.
Because there's so much water in basements on both sides of Redfield Drive that the underground runoff is not satisfactorily dealing with the runoff. So where is the runoff from solar farm? Is it gonna go into that lower retention pond before it gets evacuated out?
No, we're not connecting to any, any of those, uh, retention areas that are in the neighborhood. We're completely separate from those.
I have expected probably twenty-five solar sites of twenty-five megawatts or larger. And everyone that I have been on all have runoff to a large degree.
This is a very small, it's a very small.
One point two megawatts is not that small, up to a twenty-five megawatt. They all have runoff.
Okay, you're handling it on site.
They usually come in and just scrape the ground so they get it, it's the topography that they want for the drainage. And then they start putting their pedestals in. So we have a fence line that visually goes behind the phase two portion of Redfield Drive. Most of the solar projects that I've seen, the towns have made them put the little diagonal green striping in these chain link fences and then line them with pine trees. That they look
Okay.
pleasingly to someone, but there's an upper half of that that's gonna be bare to the eye.
I appreciate your feedback. Get that in the record. Okay, you've already spoken, let's get some people to have it, you go, ma'am, over here.
Can I just add one?
Go ahead.
With that, we're not proposing any grading within the erase. It's only for the road. There's no grading in the site. It will stay as is. Uh, the topography that's out there, whether your brains are.
Thanks for the feedback. Over here, ma'am.
Will Spencer, fifty-nine ninety-nine, Redfield Drive. I have a couple of quick questions. You talk about the environmental record.
Right.
What if, I'm naive, what is that actually?
It's a process. We have to go through, fill out a bunch of forms, answer a bunch of questions, address certain areas. Data New York has created a very, um, I almost said complex, but I wouldn't, I shouldn't say it that way. A very intense process for review of projects to make sure that did all the issues that might affect the neighborhood are addressed from an environmental standpoint. It's called the state environmental quality review, uh, process. So it's a process we go through. We answer a bunch of questions. We go through a bunch of process and make sure that we've addressed everything. And anything that comes up that might be of environmental sensitivity, we have to provide uh, workarounds for that. So it's a, it's a process. It's a New York State process. No problem.
Couple times it's been, the people objected to the road. It's been said that we own that property. Is this a, any of the piece of property that you own?
It's kinda like a flag lot.
It's hard to see on the screen, but right here and right here are the property boundaries on the very southern end. And then it starts to cut across there and that is just, as soon as we could start turning the road and away from the neighborhood, you did. So this is where the, the majority of the southern property line is, right?
I'm gonna do the, but I think, move that road over, it's still in the property.
No.
This part where my hand is, that we don't own. We only own to the north. So we can't move it over.
Very thin piece of property. Deal.
Yes, I had to just, I'd go back to describing it as flag shaped.
Yeah, the flag.
Because it's very narrow on the bottom, but clearly it opens up on the top.
Yep, that's why I get the road gets moved over. As it gets up there, it gets moved over.
Right.
As soon as we can turn, we turn onto our property.
That's what I'm seeing now, okay.
Unfortunately, there's only, this group is like sixty feet left total. It's the only access to the southern part of.
My last thought, are there any electromagnetic fields created by this for those of us with pacemakers?
The, the transformers and inverters will have, but there are very few components. And they'll be far enough away from the, from, from, as Emily mentioned, most of the, you wanna keep looking this up in this, in this corner.
Okay.
Well, wait. All right, those that have not spoken yet, back in the corner. You, where are you, Ronford? No, behind you.
Hi, Chris Pacola, six oh two six, uh, Redfield Drive. You said this road's been in your comprehensive plan for twenty to thirty years.
Yes.
Is this the original layout in your comprehensive plan for this road?
Pretty sure. If not, it may have gone farther to the east maybe, but it's, goes, it has to connect up there to the existing commercial drive, has to start down here, so there may be, have been a straighter line. But nothing that would bring it.
But it would take it away from the residents if it went back to what you have stated.
No, 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 it has to go there because that's all it's, that we decided. It, it's on that one person's property and then down, so.
We're those one people.
Pardon?
We're those one people.
I'm the building on the end next to.
Well, I'm talking about the fact that the design, well, we never actually finalized the design, it just was there.
But you then have the final say of where this road for this developer goes.
Yeah, but I can't put it on somebody else's property.
Isn't it their responsibility to get easement from the people who own the other property?
I don't believe so. Not at all.
But it's your choice to allow the road to go where they're putting it.
Planning board cannot deal with anybody else's property other than the person that's in support.
I understand. But you have the right to say if they can put the road where they're putting it.
Well, yeah, given, given their property, yeah, we have to do that, yeah.
So if you said they can't make that connection at this time, which that road was never totally completed thirty years ago when Commercial Drive was originally put in your comprehensive plan, they could enter their property from collect and still dead-end it until that road was finished, correct?
Um, the answer is I don't know. We'll take your comments under advisement, but it's not something we have ever done before.
There's always a person.
I understand, I understand, but we'll take your comments under advisement. Okay, we got one up front here and then we got one in the back over there. Go ahead, ma'am.
Judy Whitford, fifty-nine seventy, Redfield.
Hey.
I don't know a whole lot about solar either, but I did Google a lot of things and.
Oh, Google.
Yep, good old Google. And I asked, the question was, how close to a residential area is it safe to have a solar farm? And it came up with different things, but the least one was five hundred and twenty-eight feet. And the other ones were between a half and a one and a half miles of a residential area. So I'm not sure why this would even be a consideration so close to a residential area.
Well, we certainly need more than just that comment. If you've got any data that would support that, you can certainly pass it to staff. We certainly include that and look at it as part of our environmental record.
Isn't that something you should have looked at already?
We just got the project. We're just in the process of looking at the environmental record. I mean, we have just received this project. This is the first presentation of this project. It's certainly part of it. We certainly had staff looking at it and reviewing it. We certainly are going to look at everything we can, but if you, the residents, have data, facts, figures for us that can help us in this process, you can either give it to us or we can try to find it. So it's kind of you. Lance?
I think it's important, just, uh, and I, it was mentioned earlier, but so as part of this environmental review process, what it is, is this application is before the planning, which is the first meeting really that this board has had on this application.
They very first.
And so what they're doing now, this environmental review, is they're forwarding out this application and all the components to it, to all these agencies that around Rand mentioned earlier, to get their input on whether or not they feel those agencies that govern those type of environmental, uh, critical environmental areas like wetlands, uh, roadways, uh, environmental endangered species, those type of things. We're forwarding out to all those agencies to get their input. That input then comes back to this board and also there's soliciting comments from staff. All of our reviews of this application and all of the environmental reports and application reports the applicants provide. Like the glare study, like a noise pollution prevention, or excuse me, a noise analysis, like a stormwater pollution prevention plan that tells us about the stormwater runoff in the site. All of these components are being reviewed now by all of the departments, all of these agencies. And then all of that information comes back to this board prior to them making the decision on the environmental. Today and probably future meetings, the goal is to get additional input from the community on some of the things that you guys, being that you live there, have issues with, with it. The goal then is to retain that information and utilize the reports that we've received to determine whether or not the information you provided has been mitigated by the plan that before us or if there's an impact on the reports that we receive that has to be mitigated and requires a plan change. If there isn't anything that shows that a plan change needs to occur, then we move on to the next step. If there's plan, if there's changes that have to be addressed, then the board will identify those, those we call impacts. And then those impacts would have to be mitigated by the applicant and their plans. So it's a very long process. This is step one. But right now, we're all kinda for the first time getting our feet wet with this application. I just wanted to point that out.
Can I add one in the back?
No, no.
Right.
It's mitigated. Well, we have to determine that. Nobody's determining.
Uh, Anne Dunford, sixty zero seven, Redfield Drive. Um, I just have a few thoughts. Some of them are environmental. One of which is, I find it strange to overlay a thirty-year-old plan on an environment that has drastically changed. And the creation of developments like Redfield Drive and the property taxes that are being generated by the assessments on these townhouses is what's theoretically funding this road. Um, which we can debate whether, I don't know, it's a thoroughfare, it has a value to any layouts except the residence in the commercial area. So I just want you to consider that environment is not just land, sky, earth, water. It's the community of people who are being impacted.
That's part of the process.
That that is not being taken off.
Part of the process. And by the way, this road will be built by the applicant, not by the factory.
A second question. Would this project be permitted if they were not willing to build that connective piece?
That's a good.
Well, I guess we won't know, because they're saying that they're gonna do it, so I don't know.
Uh, it, it would be interested, I would be interested personally, if the engineering company could generate more to the community information on how many megawatts are being generated, what the tax status of this development is, how many tax abatements are getting either from the state or from the town? Just information like that, which I think is interesting for us to consume.
Okay.
And, um, also Cornell is, is putting in a ten acre, uh, solar field right by the airport, which is completely before it, forested. You know, no residential areas around it. And it's generating, um, three hundred and twenty, enough energy to power three hundred and twenty homes for a year. That's instructing, that's a lot. But I was also wondering if the town is getting any kind of electricity or commitment from them.
As a private, a private development. Hey? Sir, I haven't heard from you.
Ross Stark, sixty twenty-five, do you own this property right now? Okay, so they're planning to do something on a property you don't even own yet.
Right.
They don't even own it yet. I, I like the point that she made that, um, that this twenty or thirty-year road that's there, at the time, was that zoned residential for the current Redfield Drive residents? Because.
Don't know the answer, but probably so, yeah.
Because, no, I, I saw it was being zoned that way for residential on top of that road. Now, you, you approved the residential neighborhood, but thirty years ago when that road was there, I don't think it was approved to have a residential there.
Is that an incentive zoning?
Originally, that area was so restricted business.
Okay.
On one side, light industrial on the other. And, uh, over the years, they tried to develop it with different proposals.
Mm-hmm.
At one point, there was even going to be an indoor gun shooting range.
Yeah.
So, so that.
So, uh, different ones, so.
It's a, didn't, didn't be zoned to incentive zoning.
Oh, so it went to incentive zoning, so the town board made a decision that that would go residential. Okay.
Unfortunate.
Hmm? Unfortunate. The rest of the state is a what?
Commercial.
Right. And it was part of the part.
If you don't mind, this code enforcement officer over here, he made reference to these filters. And I would like to get information from him on the knowledge he has about those filters.
Okay, you can certainly reach out to him.
And is that a requirement that's set up by the code enforcement, or was that something that Prime Mart offered?
No, every house, new house that's built has one of those.
And they say on the same units?
Similar units, they all do the same technique.
I'd like to have that on at least, on similar units that do the same thing.
Okay, you can request that.
Those units do not do what I think you believe they are made to do.
Okay, we're getting down to, uh.
If you could, I'd make a request, I'd have him provide, if you could.
You can reach out to the department, the building bar anytime and he'll work with you on that.
I'd love to see that.
We got, okay, your second time, go ahead.
I just have a quick question.
Yeah.
Lorraine, it's, well, okay. Um, so just seeing that the property isn't purchased by you yet, you don't own the property yet. We're still doing a lot of investigating or whatever. What is the time plan? Your time plan for when you feel that you would be able to have this working and available and doing, you know, doing what you purchased the property for? I mean, is this like a year from now? Is this five years from now or what?
So our, our intention is to purchase the property shortly. And we've been working on this with, with staff and there's a separate process to this whole, um, design that is with the utility. The utility is a very long process, so before we even got to this stage, we had to apply and get approval from the utility that they could take the power from this site and safely integrate into their, uh, their grid. So we have that approval. We need, are actually, there's a process in there, the twenty-five cent part where we are this week, making the twenty-five percent deposit to the cost to the utility to connect this, this project. So that's been done, uh, land purchases in the next week. The project, uh, depending on how long we go through the planning plans, as I mentioned earlier on, this would be a twenty twenty-five build, so probably next summer to the end of it. It would not take more than about four months to build this project, so it could be in operation by the end of the year.
Okay, how many more additional comments? Okay, ma'am, and then we'll go back here to you.
That's the current piece, fix in a little eight, Redfield Drive.
Hey.
I guess my concern is our property values and, you know, I think, I don't think any of us moved into this neighborhood thinking that, especially the people that are up where this road's gonna come in, that you know, there was gonna be this big giant commercial road put in. And I, I, I just question why you would ever have approved to have a residential area knowing that this was potential, what you were going to be doing with this road and this property. I mean, I'm sure you all own homes and this is our property. This is our investment. These are not cheap townhouses, okay? These are expensive homes. And I feel really bad for the people that are going to be living near this road because what buffer are they gonna get? I mean, are, are you gonna put? what buffer are they gonna get? I mean, are, are you gonna put in fences there so that there's some, so that there's some, you know, um, noise reduction or so they don't have to look at a road? I mean, seriously. These, these are, I'm, I'm just saying for, for the people that live in this community. I mean, you have to put yourself in our shoes right now. Because this, these are, these are our homes. And we wanna be able, if, we wanna be able to have the value that we put into these homes.
With, and.
I just want you to be thinking about that. I mean, I hear that, you know, you had this road planned for thirty years and all this stuff. But you approved for us for, for this development to be put in.
Right.
And.
The town did that.
You had to have known that this was maybe coming down the pipe. And I would just hope that you would think about us as residents and what you're going to do to make it so that we have the value of our home.
Mr. McTannen, five, the town board is the one that did the incentive zoning. We deal with it after that happened. We'll, we'll deal with this one here. Sir, you, I'm gonna let you talk again.
My name is John Brady again. Um, just one thing that I forgot to mention in the envi, regarding the environmental record. Um, and part of the road, it's called the southern section of the road, which is very close adjacent to property line.
Right.
Um, the proposal shows on the plot plan, shows that the road is going to be approximately eight feet higher than the existing ground throughout that area. Which means if you're standing in my backyard, you look at the side of a highway embankment, which is going to be above your head. If you stand in my bedroom and look at it, you're still looking into the side of a highway embankment. This road design is not a good solution.
Okay. Thank you for your feedback. Sir, then I'll get back to you.
Ross Raymond, sixty ten Redfield Drive. Ed, do you hear what's going on here? There's forty people here or more, and none of us want this road in this position or even close to.
I do.
Our houses. Do you?
I sure do.
Because it seems so. We're all bringing up these problems that we have and we bringing them up to you and what we're hearing back from you is put this off. I go out and get some information and, and bring it into the town. I go this, I go that. Or it was always planned that way, or it's, it's fine if it's right up to the backyard of the house. It's fine if there's trucks, you know, going in and out and everything. It isn't fine. There isn't anybody in here and I hope you all agree with me. This is not mine.
I certainly understand you and I understand where you're coming from and it certainly isn't my first rodeo here. I've been doing plant buying and zoning for twenty some odd years. Um, on the other hand, our responsibility is pretty simple. By law, we take the project as it's presented and try to make it the best project possible. I don't have the necessarily ability unless there's an environmental issue that says there's an environmental issue that can't be mitigated to just say, oh, we're not gonna do the project. Okay, this is zoned, available for this. This is the way it's, uh, the town has made decisions to set things up. So we have to do the best job we can with what we have. We're gonna look at the roads. Certainly that's a big issue. We'll talk to the town board. They did the issue with the incentive zoning and see where they were coming from on the whole project. We'll look at some different pieces of this. I'm not saying we're, I mean, this is the very first time we've had a meeting on this. First time we've heard from the applicant. So first time you've heard from the applicant. So this is not a done deal. If I came off, I'm trying to have you, help you understand the reality of situation as opposed to, and that's why we have an environmental review and we have the whole process. But I'm how, trying to help you understand some of the reality of the situation. That is zoned for this kind of thing in that pri, in that position. That, that road has been set up to be there forever. I'm just saying, that doesn't mean that it has to stay that way. It doesn't mean we can't change things. But this is the beginning of the process. Okay? We have one red shirt in the back. Phil Shell, fifty-nine seventy-six. Thank you, Ed, for listening to everybody here. Thank you. Uh, with a general complaint, all about the same thing. What is the process for us to take this to the board so that they would hear us and then maybe come back and bend your ear? Well, first off, town board doesn't bend our ear. Town board is into, we are independent of the town board. We are appointed to do our job as a planning board. The town board, by law, is not supposed to interfere with the planning. Now, that being said, that your development was an incentive zoning project and the town board approved that, not us. We then took what they approved and made it the best we could. And you have a very, very nice area over there, um, which is right across the street from me, by the way. I live over on King Hill, across the street, so I know that area very well. Um, but if you wanna talk to the town board, all you gotta do is show up at a meeting or better yet, get a meeting, sit down, talk to the supervisor. Tell them what your concerns are with that road, yada, 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 and I mean, I don't know what they can and can't do. That's not my area of responsibility. I'm not trying to shove it off, but that we have our role here, they have their role there. Uh, and really, the two don't really connect. It kinda sounds kind of funny that the town board can and doesn't, you know, tell us what to do. They don't, they can't by law. So I'm try, you know, and part of what I always try to do, and maybe I shouldn't do it. I mean, I can tell you the supervisor probably tells me I shouldn't do it as much as I do. Part of my, I think my job is, is to try to help educate you on the process. Educate you, the citizens who don't do this stuff every day like we do. Haven't done it for twenty-five years like I Tony. Um, try to help you understand the process a little bit. And if it sounds a little cold, if it sounds a little rigid, it's government. It's the way things end up being as we do things. Doesn't mean we can't adjust and adapt and do other things, but I try to help you understand the process. And if you don't like the process, I'm sorry. I, we established the process. Established by the state of New York and the laws of the state of New York, and that's what we got to work with. It doesn't mean we don't care. Doesn't mean we don't sympathize with you. Doesn't mean we don't care about the value of your properties. Doesn't mean we don't, you know, do any of that. At the same time, we care about the developer and what they're doing and how they're doing it and, and the other types of things. Um, so, um, I hope you don't leave here angry at us. But hopefully you, you leave here with an understanding of the process. And know that there'll be many, many more meetings like this to where we will discuss different things. And we will attempt to do the best we can. Anyone else have anything before we can move on and yes, ma'am?
I'm sorry, sir. I'll have a, to ask you a clarifying question. He said we all just started this. This gentleman said multiple times and he stopped himself from saying how long he's doing this. And as soon as that sign went up by the pond, I called and I met with Dan DiNori, okay? And I looked at a map that had not just been written that day. So I'm, I'm a little offended.
The staff has been looking at it, but the planning board just received it. As a planning board, we're, we're, we don't have, I mean, the staff has been looking at it, working it, working with the applicant. I know numerous meetings, um, but we as the planning board is what I meant. This is our first time seeing and hearing this, so I apologize if I didn't make that clear.
Okay. I just want to reiterate what other people have said. This is my only house.
Mm-hmm.
I worked my whole life to be able to live in this house. I don't know what I am going to do with the road being built closer to my back door than the road in the front and people giving me smoke and mirrors that the fumes aren't coming into my house. I am feeling like I'm, I just don't even know how to explain to you how angry I am with the way you keep saying, we'll take that under advis, advisement. I don't feel like you're understanding. That's the process within, for any environmental review. That's what we do. We take your feedback. We get it on the record and we go through the process. What do you want me to say right now? I have no process other than to go through the state mandated process. I mean, I understand how you feel, but I can't turn around and violate the laws of the state of New York because you feel the way you feel. I have to follow the law. I mean, I know it's cruel, but it is the process that we have to go through. I can't just turn around and go, ah, I looked at it, I don't like it.
Okay.
It doesn't work that way. I still don't understand why you're even listening to us because what you say to me is it doesn't matter what we say. You're, and you're saying.
The way you're coming.
That's, it is. You're coming across like it doesn't matter what we say. And then you're telling me I need to bring data. I'm like, dude, do you want me to go, I am a chemist. I can collect data, trust me.
I'm sorry, we have to go through a process over here. Yeah, then I'll get you in the back.
Uh, Sam Cameroddy, I'm at six oh oh nine Redfield.
Mm-hmm.
Thank God I'm on the other side of these townhomes that you're gonna build this road on.
Okay.
The one thing that keeps going through my mind, this whole board seems to be infatuated with the idea that these people are gonna pony up the money. And that's the two ends of commercial drive.
Okay.
This board seems to be just, that's the greatest thing. Let's just shove this road through. And it's gonna be commercial vehicles, big heavy vehicles coming up and down this road for once. So they can get from one end of Colette to ninety-six. Is that worth all of this?
Appreciate your feedback. All we can do is put it on the record and consider it when we do the environmental review. I appreciate it.
Is there any thought to not doing that, to not putting?
We have to go through the environmental review of the process.
No, I'm asking you.
Go in the back over here, Rick. You had your hand up. Go ahead.
Oh, you were asking, uh, John just stands at six oh two-two. You were asking, you know, well, what can I say? Well, what you can say is, and what, what might give us a bit more confidence, is that even though this was planned thirty years ago, needs of a community change in thirty years. What was there thirty years ago, probably were vacant lots. And that was fine at that time. But you've gotta consider the needs of this community have changed. And as lady set up here, we've got our investment here.
Yeah.
Our investment's gonna be zero with a road that's eight feet higher than we are in our own homes. And if something tips a thick road, it's gonna be right into your house.
Yeah, I appreciate, yeah, I.
You got nothing.
We're gonna look at everything. We're gonna look at it. Ma'am?
Linda Camerada, six zero zero nine Redfield. If, why are you purchasing this property?
You're talking to me, man.
I'm sorry. Why are they purchasing this property if this is not gonna approve?
They're enjoying this commercial venture.
I mean.
I mean, it's a commercial venture.
I understand it, but why would I buy a property that is now, I mean, they must have, there must be in this process.
It is, it is what it is. They're, they can decide how, what they purchase, when they purchase. Okay? Thank you. Okay. Anybody else here? Now I'm gonna turn to online and see who online would like to say something. Okay. Okay, we got some people online. Anyone online like to speak for or against this project? Anybody left online who would still like to speak for or against this project? Anybody? Okay. So where we're at now is we have, uh, four resolutions to continue, um, the application, the two special use permits and the two, uh, preliminary site plans to continuation as we continue to do the environmental record. These are going to be continued to win. Ron, remind me of the date. Pardon? May fifteenth. So the next meeting will be May fifteenth. Okay? Um, let me, before we get to that, so let me go to the, the, the board. Aaron, any comment?
Yeah, I do have a couple.
Okay.
So, looking through this packet. Uh, first thing, for decommissioning, is there, you have a procedure for restoring the land? How do you, obviously we know right now, this is a wood. Miss twenty, twenty-five to forty years. How do you know what to bring?
Do we use the microphone? We can't.
The general plan is to recede, so take out any, any below ground, uh, equipment. And then level if there is any level, but recede.
So you're not, you're not making it back into a water lot, making it?
Well, again, they're not removing much wood to, to, correct?
It's all of it.
Uh, can you explain revise, revise sure, surety for emergency de, um, decommission? So revise, the revised search?
Sure.
For emergency decommission?
That's, again, so. Urgency decommission is.
Yeah.
Yeah. So typically what happens in my local department for this discussion
No.
is a bond of some, or some financial instrument is in place. If that you're attempting, you need to manage it, take away the size of anything to restore. Give it time, and access to funds to restore the site.
Yeah, it's the same thing we did on the other solar project. We'll look at the decommissioning plan and make sure that it's similar to the one we did before. Uh, and make sure, we always create a, a bond so that there's funds there just in case this company is not able to restore the property, that the town can hire somebody to do it. And that's why we set that surety bond aside. And if it's like we did before, we have it reviewed every five years to ensure that the amount is still adequate to do the recovery.
So is it, you, you just said every five years. Is that the same thing for decommissioning costs?
Yes. It's, it's the whole decommissioning process. We review it. Engineering reviews it to make sure that the amount of the bond is still adequate to address the needs that the town may have to do that.
Uh, last thing, uh, so there's a table of waste when you decommission. It listed all the materials. I did not see oils. What is oils? It's during.
It wouldn't be any more than store them on the site.
But then if something happens, the transformer, um, you have the batteries as well. If there's a mishap, add your decommission.
So automatically the operations is a maintenance operation and I'll say emergency response. Notice that fire was not here. So there'll be a, a procedure for emergency services. We'll work with the, those, to make sure that we both can have the sales. That's part of our, um, commission.
All I have for now.
Adrian?
Doug?
And, uh, just a general comment from me. I mean, uh, we certainly have been through this. We, on the bigger project.
We, on the bigger project, but we have some good experience on the decommissioning plans and the rest. If we get to that point, again, certainly we're doing the environmental review and making sure that the environmental review covers everything that we need. I highly encourage you to look at the environmental review documents when they come out. If you see something there you don't think we marked correctly, let us know. Feedback is important. Ma'am, I'll let you have one more comment.
Um, you just were talking about the process.
Yeah. That's if they took everything out and removed everything.
Oh, okay, so that's where, just part of hearing. So are the woods, is the plan, they would remove all the woods?
Okay. So there, there's all the line and kind of something that, that's fine. But there is a, a buffer of woods that, that will remain. Where the solar array is, which we've really been, it's restored, it will be restored.
And the items, the solar items, do they look like what the future is? They, they're on some sort of a metal table and.
Yep. And remind me of these movable? These are stationary, so they don't move. Some, if you'll notice, some of them move with the sun. These are stationary, facing south, I assume.
Oh, they slam.
Right. Yeah, they'll slam. Okay, we'll take another comment and then we're gonna close this thing up.
May I ask a question? Marshall Grady, sixty-eight Q.
Okay.
Why did they agree to build the road?
That's not our fault, ma'am. I mean, it, I mean.
Why did you agree to build the road?
Ron, go ahead.
This road has been part of the ongoing comprehensive plan.
Okay, okay, we're not gonna get into a back and forth here. Okay. The answer is we.
They decided to.
Well, they decided to build this project. Part of this project was the road. Sorry.
That road remains there.
Correct.
So, the town will may have that road regardless of your success or not.
Correct. Okay. Thank everybody for coming. Uh, we've got four resolutions. Do I have somebody to, uh, I assume the applicants read them, their discontinuation resolutions? Do I have someone to, uh, waive the reading, block all four and approve them as presented?
Moved.
Moved by Adrian, second by. Doug, anybody else have a comment? Clerk, take a roll call vote, please.
Dulcia Lucia?
Aye.
Doug Nees?
Aye.
Aaron Sweeney?
Aye.
Adrian Bellis?
Aye.
Adam.
Aye. I wanna thank you very much for coming, providing feedback. You may not think we heard you, but I guarantee you we did. So we're gonna take about a five-minute break here, let you guys get on your way. And, uh, thank you for your comment. And, with a rap. Okay. Okay, now we're back on, okay. We completed that project up, uh, as best we could. And, uh, we'll do now the review of the town of Victor about the solar project. You guys reviewed the letter that, uh, we put together? Anybody have any problems with me, uh, signing that and sending it out? Okay, we're good there. Okay, um, deming the application adequate, Matty Powers for, uh, supply. Powers Sports.
He's online, too.
He's online. Okay, give us a little overview of what's going on there.
Sure. Uh, so. I was in front of the board about four or five years ago when we bought the property to, uh, put an addition on. And in, uh, uh, misstep on the original set of plans, we did not adequately, um, mark off all of the display areas that we, uh, are looking to have our products on display on our property. So, uh, codes officer, uh, asked us to come back in front of you guys, uh, and amend the site plan. So, we have the, the drawings in, uh, that we've turned in. Uh, when we did that, we were, uh, we, we were not instructed to file a new, uh, short form seeker. So, we, I've talked to Ron and, uh, other officials at the town. So, we're going to get that, uh, turned back in so that can accompany the site plan. As well as, it was noted that, um, our site engineer, Anthony Venenzi, needed to add a few more, um, components to the drawing. So, I'm here kinda to find out what those are. He reached out to the, to the officials today. Uh, hadn't heard back yet, but if they wanted to talk through that offline, we're good with that and we can come back. But I'm happy to discuss, uh, the drawings that we've already presented a little bit to answer any questions.
Okay. Let me summarize where I think we're going with this, okay? We're gonna kick this can down the road a little bit because there are some items we feel we need from you to start with. Um, staff can tell you what they are, they can discuss that with you. The other piece that is concerning to us is that your lot is not in compliance with the application that you submitted the last time. Um, recently, it looks like you've moved some stuff to the back, but you are not in compliance with what you asked for and received the last time. And I understand that as because you've grown and we think that's a phenomenal, wonderful thing. But. You gotta get things back to some semblance of where they should be so we can adjust and adapt to where it should be. So, what we have done here is we have a resolution here that I don't know if you had a chance to review it. But the resolution, resolution basically says that you need to sit down with the code enforcement officer and the director of development within the next thirty days and review what they need so that we can turn around and make a determination at our May fifteenth meeting as it relates to this project. And by going forward on this project at that point. So, you're gonna have thirty days to basically talk to staff, sit down with them, make sure that everybody knows what's going on so that we think we'll be able to move forward. Now I'm gonna turn over to Ron and Dan and they can ed, or clean up what I just said.
Okay.
That's basically what I said to the gentleman this morning when he talked to me on the phone. We need to sit down outside of the meeting room.
Right.
Come to agreement with what needs to be on these drawings.
Okay. Dan?
Yeah, um, I was able to bring up the site plan that was approved back in nineteen. Uh, I submitted it with you, what was submitted with this project. You guys could review the differences between the two. Um, it looks like things, items that were not completed, uh, were a fence around the back area that is now has a tractor trailer storage area and.
Which we don't like, by the way.
Um, so, I mean, there are definitely things that are concerning, uh, which I know is concerning to this board about outdoor storage and where everything has to be and landscaping and, uh, a lot of those things weren't done. The other side of it is, I know the fire marshal was out there and we've been concerned about fire access being, uh, being blocked. So those are concerns I, I know board members have come to me about and we're trying to address as well.
I would guess that your project is probably one of the most commented on by this board to staff about not being in non-compliance. And I know you don't wanna be that way. It's because of your success and I understand that. But we gotta find a way to come to some happy medium. Does that make any sense?
Absolutely.
So if you can sit down with staff in the next thirty days, we're gonna approve this resolution. Call them up, make an appointment, come down, maybe I'll even be able to come down and talk to you. And let's see if what we can do to fix this problem. Excuse me. Because we want you to be highly successful in this town within the rules that you asked for and we approve. How does that sound?
Sounds fair.
Okay. So we have a resolution in front of us. I, I, I assume you guys don't, you guys have anything else? Anybody here on the board have any other comments? We have a resolution here that basically says, meet with staff within thirty days and we'll, we'll move our determination to the May fifteenth meeting. So, with that, do I have a motion to waive the reading and approve this resolution as presented? Moved by Aaron, second by. Adrian, any other comments? Clerk, take a roll call vote, please.
Lucia?
Aye.
Doug Nees?
Aye.
Aaron Sweeney?
Aye.
Adrian Bellis?
Aye.
Aye, you're good to go. Meet with staff, let's get this thing rolling, okay?
Very good.
Thank you, sorry you had to sit through everything.
Uh, you're gonna laugh, but the last time I was, uh, sitting in front of you guys was the Yellow Mills project.
You got bad timing.
Yeah, exactly.
I just thought this was normal for the town.
No, we haven't had one like this since then.
I must be just lucky.
Yeah, I guess so. Maybe we don't want you to come back very many other times. All right, buddy, have a good one, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, next item up is demon application adequate for public hearing. This is a two-lot subdivision, Potter, Cairo, eighty-fourty-one. Tell us what you're doing.
The plan for this would be, um, a potential household bill.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we're lifting the property to my, my uncle and daughter. So we potentially are, you know, claiming to build a house.
Okay. All right, staff?
We're good to go, as.
Okay. Our, our purpose tonight is just saying, okay, we got enough information and the staff says we do and we've looked at it to move forward. So, um, do we have a resolution on this one, too? Okay, do I have a motion to waive the reading and approve the resolution as presented?
Motion by Tim.
Second by? Adrian, any other comments? Clerk, take a roll call vote.
Lucia?
Aye.
Doug Nees?
Aye.
Aaron Sweeney?
Aye.
Aaron Sweeney, I'm sorry. We didn't know, aye.
Aye. Okay, the process is then staff will put out a, a public hearing, or public notice, or a public hearing notice. And it's coming back to us when?
May first.
May first. We'll see you then. Okay? Okay. Yeah, it's always the first and third Wednesday of the month. Thank you. Okay. This is the five-lot subdivision, scout plane subdivision.
I have to recuse myself of this application.
Okay. Oh, Aaron has recused himself? Adrian, oh my God. One of those nights. Nine o'clock, it's after nine o'clock. Thank you, ma'am. Okay, so, uh, who we got?
Nobody.
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 Okay, so, we have looked at what we have, we have enough information to move forward to public hearing. Um, do I have a motion to waive the reading and approve the resolution? So moved, moved by Doug, second by. Yeah. Tim, any other comments? Clerk, take a roll call vote.
Dulcia?
Aye.
Doug Nees?
Aye.
Aaron Sweeney?
Aye.
Aye.
I just wanted to know how much time we put in, especially Ron, for you to approve that in thirty seconds.
Okay, you can come back up now. Get up here and get to work. Um, okay, we got, uh, two letter credit releases, Hathaway and Western New York, everything's good with that? I have a motion to block these two and approve the resolutions as presented. Motion by Tim, second by Adrian, any other comments? Clerk, take a roll call vote.
Lucia?
Aye.
Doug Nees?
Aye.
Aaron Sweeney?
Aye.
Adrian Bellis?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Farnbrook subdivision, phase seven A, seven B, letter credit establishment, everything's good there? I've motioned to waive the reading and approve that resolution as well. Moved, moved by Adrian, second by. Doug, any other comments? Clerk, take a roll call vote, please.
Dulcia?
Aye.
Doug Nees?
Aye.
Aaron Sweeney?
Aye.
Aye, we gotta separate these two. Open discussion, short, Ron, short.
Any questions?
No question?
Uh, the, uh, contract has been awarded to Rochester for the sidewalk.
Oh, good.
Project. We have a reconstruction meeting scheduled for next Monday, morning at ten o'clock.
What percentage do you think you'll be able to complete?
He said everything.
So the dollar figures are enough that you can do the whole thing?
Stands right in.
Okay, all right, I like to hear that. Anything else?
Nope.
Dan?
Uh, we're still trying to get everything up on the shared file, hopefully you guys are all able to get it.
I like that, yeah, I like the line.
So, it, there was a lot this time around and a lot of it started really trickling in right there at the end, so I apologize about that. We will try to get it up earlier. There is a two. There is a two-factor for some people to log in, if you've noticed that, um, even when.
Some of these guys I would do that with too. I can.
Yeah, so if you, if you're having trouble, let me know, but there is sometimes that two-factor identification that you need to do. Uh, but we will continue. If you want anything in paper, as always, just let me know.
Perfect. I always do.
Yeah, we give everything to him and.
Of course.
Tim?
Started pulling the plows and wings off today, so.
Excellent. I like to hear that. Lance?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Anything else in the public? Nothing. I don't have anything other than I continue to work with staff. Do what we gotta do and take phone calls and do what I gotta do. Anything else?
I just hope that the engineer for that project up on County Road 8 in Altsboro has taken the time to read that resolution because he has a lot of stuff he has to get to me by tomorrow to start that review period.
I hope so. All right, with that, motion two adjourned by Tim, seconded by Doug. All in favor? Aye. All right.